One more minute.
Supposed to talk loud? Bringing the people.
Yeah.
You missed. It is, is Kira Swanson the video, she the video technician?
She's not doing that.
Oh, you're not doing it? It's coming. There you go. Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Scott County Board of Adjustment on April twelfth, two thousand twenty-one at six thirty P M. First item on the agenda is roll call and introductions. Um, so, Coney, I mean, the planning advisory commissioners, Donna Hentges.
Here.
Gary Hartman here, Ray Huber.
Here.
Ed Robbie.
Here.
Barb Johnson.
Here.
Lee Watson.
Here.
And Tom Vonhoff.
Here.
Also in attendance, county staff is Brad Davis, our planning manager, Marty Schmitz, our zoning administrator, Greg Wagner, senior planner, Nathan Hall, associate planner, and Barb Simonson, deputy clerk to the board. And, um, I don't see, Tom Wolfe, not here yet?
No.
Okay. All right, next item on the agenda is the approval of the October twelfth, two thousand twenty.
Um, I see Tom Wolfe is on the do call.
So here differently.
Okay, uh, uh, getting back to the attendance, County, Scott County Commissioner Tom Wolfe is in attendance. Um, next item on the agenda is the approval of the two, October twelfth, two thousand twenty Board of Adjustment minutes.
I'll move to the room.
Second, motion by Commissioner Johnson, second by Commissioner Vonhoff. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, seven, zero. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing for the Wydel variance, P L number two oh two one dash zero one seven. It's a request for a variance to reduce the side yard setback for an accessory building from thirty feet to five feet. It's located section fourteen, Cedar Lake Township, current zoning is R R dash one C. And who's going to present? Nathan Hall will present.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Good evening, board members. The subject property is located in section twenty-two, Cedar Lake Township. Uh, two point six acre parcel that has an existing home centered on the eastern half of the property. Uh, the area west of the home is a wooded area that's close down towards a wetland. Uh, much of that western slope and wetland area is protected within the drainage and utility easement. The applicant, um, Jane Wydel here this evening, is requesting a twenty-five foot area to reduce the required side yard setbacks to thirty feet, five feet, in order to construct a forty by fifty accessory building. The building will be located in an alternate drain field site. The applicant indicates a new building will be used primarily for storage of property maintenance and hobby equipment. Uh, while the property is two point six acres, the narrow, uh, portions of it, the interior and placement of septic systems, limits the ability to place a detached accessory building, uh, of the proposed size. Uh, the applicant states that they're proposing, uh, the building at this distance to avoid a drainage swell. Uh, they have indicated they go through the, uh, center of the property, uh, bring water from the front to the rear. The applicant intends to construct a driveway, uh, to the proposed garage, uh, at a future base and protect the, uh, location. Uh, Scott County Environmental Services has reviewed this request and after receiving verification regarding the, uh, proposed distance to the, uh, septic system and placement of the driveway, they, uh, state they don't have any issues with the request. Uh, the applicant has submitted, uh, all the appropriate documentation, received approval to relocate the alternate septic site to the front yard. The Scott County Natural Resources Department, um, has also reviewed the request and, uh, suggested that the, uh, building be positioned as far west as possible to avoid the drainage swell. Um, and, uh, because of the proposed five foot distance to the property line, uh, they've also suggested that, um, that the construction easement, um, like building the property issues of going on with the property, and also the patient contact township regarding drainage utility easement and driveway.
Cedar Lake Town Board?
As stated at a recommendation, uh, I'm sorry, when we talked with the, uh, Cedar Lake Township, um, she didn't say that the recommendation, that a recommendation will not be made by the town board regarding this item. Uh, the neighboring property owner to the south had stated they have no concerns, uh, with the request. Um, there are eight, uh, practical difficulties, um, that might be considered regarding the variance. Um, it appears that, uh, some of these criteria met, some are not. Uh, staff does feel that changes, uh, to, uh, made to the request to lessen the need for the variance and reduce the need for the variance. Um, and, uh, our recommendation is that, uh, based on topographical issues, uh, staff may be supportive of a variance, um, uh, to reduce the setback from thirty feet, um, but it is not so. But we are not supportive of a request, uh, for a variance of twenty-five feet. And so based on the, uh, criteria that's listed in the, uh, staff report, uh, we are recommending to null the request. Uh, Mr. Wydel, the applicant, is here tonight, and, uh, the applicant has indicated that they have a willingness to, uh, amend the request and discuss other options. Um, and, um, I will certainly, uh, stand by for any questions or if you'd like to bring Mr. Wydel here to.
Thank you, Nathan. Um, is there any questions, uh, for Nathan by the board at this time?
I have some questions regarding where it's going to go. Um, there's a ravine in the back that we talked about, and maybe Mr. Wydel could talk to us about it, but anything can be built and anything can be, uh, can be graded to make it great. So I don't know why we tend to just move this building further west to get a near appropriate setback. I know you probably don't know how to answer that, but maybe hear from the applicant later.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. Huber, uh, perhaps the applicant can speak to that, um, and, uh, the topography of the site, and I may, uh, not wish to grade the site any further.
Is there any other questions by the board for Nathan Hall? Okay, um, this is a public hearing.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, do you want to sign in?
Already done.
Okay, and state your name to everybody, those of you.
Shane Wydel. Good, yeah, um, thank you for seeing me first. Uh, yeah, I am completely wide open from shifting the building away from the property line. Um, the only problem with that is the building site currently is fifty feet wide. As you go beyond the fifty feet, it's a big swale, um, answering your question. Uh, there's three properties to the north that I get all their water runoff, and it comes under our driveways, goes around the house, and I just do not want to disturb that. Um, I mean, anytime we go over an inch of rain, it's, it's a river that runs around the, the property and then heads down, pretty good sized ravine down to the wetland. So we get three properties to the north, one property to the south, and we're the low, low property. Um, so, yeah, I'm completely open to ideas coming outside five feet, ten, fifteen. Uh, the only problem is, is as you get, uh, closer to the runoff, the runway, you're gonna, I, I'm just not going to build it because of, uh, the, uh, cost to redirect all that water and it's just, it's a good sized ravine, so water's going to go where it's going to go. Um, yeah, uh, he, Nathan mentioned that it is a unique property to the, uh, neighborhood where, uh, most of the properties in the neighborhood, half of my yard is wetland or it's pretty steep drop off. And, um, you can see by the topographical map that it, it, it drops off pretty good there. Um, and making that back up, I'm just, I'm billable. So that's how I got to five feet was that I'm only mowing roughly one and a half acres, one point three acres, and so that's how I came up to five feet. But I have no problem with moving building off of that, just as long as I got something big enough to house all my stuff. Uh, the last thing I want to say is, um, when I bought the property in two thousand thirteen, I was not looking where the, where the building could go, the accessory building, I was more wondering if I could afford the place. Well, since then, I've had two kids, and we've, we've, we've got a lot of stuff, um, boats, snowmobile trailers, all that stuff, and I'd really like to get that out of my dad's place and my brother's place and bring it home. So it's, it's, yeah, yeah, I'd like to give their shops back, so, yeah, I'm open to anything, um, um, if there's some middle ground we can find.
Mr. Wydel, do you have an existing smaller garage already there?
No, no, what you're looking at is the snowmobile trailer, the, the, to the, to the north, that's my twenty-eight foot snowmobile trailer.
Okay.
Mr. Chair. Yeah, I was out at your site and, um, it's, uh, it's a challenging site.
Absolutely.
And when looking at the, the index, um, how did you come to the size of the building? Just, just talk about that.
Um, ultimately, how I came from, uh, the previous owners had a hockey rink which disturbed the septic site. They, they brought a dozer in before I owned it, and they made a fifty by one hundred. It's flat there, it's fifty by one hundred. And, um, yeah, so I took the fifty feet and I shrunk it down a little bit, and I looked at the variances for, or not a variance, setbacks for under two acres, and that's how I came up with the five feet. So I'm, I'm open to shrinking the building, but I'd still like to be able to get all my stuff in it, so. So I'm not looking for a detached garage, twenty-four by twenty-four, I'm looking for something a little bigger, so.
There isn't a lot of space on your lot.
Right.
Considering the size of it, but when you go out and look at it and see the elevations and, and what's going on with the drainage.
Yeah.
There, um, and when I looked at it, I thought, it, that's why the building's where it's at, where you're proposing it, where it's at, because I, I didn't see another space where I thought you could put in, because it, and especially where your septic field is right behind the house there.
Absolutely, yeah, and if there was anywhere else to put it inside, I'd be putting it there, that would be a lot easier, a lot cheaper. Yep, so, yeah, there's just not, and, and we get along with our neighbors, there's kids in the neighborhood, we're being in the country, we do not want to move, and I'm not saying I would move or shift. But, you know, we, we want to make it work.
Right, it's, it's difficult, um, for us to put it right in the setback there, it was really close to the property line.
Yep.
Um, I would sort of, a, a smaller variance than, than, than the five foot, and maybe I would even go to like ten feet on there if, if that would be something that the commission would, uh, support on this. And if the building could be fit in there, I mean, I don't know if it can or not.
Yeah.
But I, I would support something like that. Do you know what the distance, and I don't know if staff knows this, um, and the other concern I had is when I was looking at that house to the south.
Yeah.
About what would be the distance from that building to the, to the house to the south there? Because I'm sure they're thirty feet off the property line.
They are exactly thirty feet, and so is my property. My property to the north is exactly thirty.
Thirty feet, that's, I figured that's probably, that's usually.
Yeah, I, uh, to the corner, to the south corner of it, I'm not sure that dimension. I do know in one of the, to the swing set, I have that dimension. I think that was like sixty some. So from the, from, I have it roughly staked out right now when, um, yeah, so.
Mr. Chair, Shane.
Yeah.
If you move it further west, you're getting into that ravine a little bit, but that ravine's not extremely deep in that area, it's a couple feet. Could you just take out some of those trees and, and grade it up and then grade around it? I mean, it seems like you could swail around the building and have no problem.
Yeah, um, yeah, you could, you could get it further to the north, absolutely. It's just, uh, the amount of water is impressive. I mean, I, I ultimately do not want to mess with that. I, you got three houses to the north, one to the south, and it's, uh, it's a river that comes through there. So, and, and just to be clear, I don't plan on putting a driveway in right away. I thought I'd need to have, uh, approval here to put the driveway in, and so ultimately I plan on putting, storing stuff in there off season, so bringing a lot of stuff in and I'll just do the grass.
If you shove it north.
Yeah, yep.
I had my direction wrong, north. Um, I mean, there's some grading you have to do to get it up to grade, because I assume you build it at elevation, it's a tall pole.
Yeah.
Probably about nine eighty, so you can build around and grade around it. You see that being a big challenge, I mean, there's some grading, you'd have to take out some trees, you'd have to.
Yeah.
Raise grade and grade around it.
Yeah, I could definitely push it north. I, there, there's no point, it's just, as I go north, this building is going to shrink, you know? Um, instead of forty feet, it's probably going to be thirty-six or thirty-four, some.
But you'll end up in that ravine a little bit.
That's not my plan, I would stay up top still. I would stay by that nine eighty, I would stay where it dips, that's, that's the farthest I would go.
I mean, there's not a lot of grading, there's a little bit of grading, but not ton.
Right. It probably.
I guess I would, uh, be okay with, uh, a slight reduction in the variance, but I still think you can grade further to the north.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
I, I think it drops off pretty significantly. Hard to see it from this angle. I, I don't know that, I know you're looking at the, the contour lines there.
Yeah.
But, uh, um, it, it, I don't know.
It, it does drop off, I would say it's probably four or five feet at a minimum, and then once you get into the trees, it drops off more than ten, fifteen, you know, it's a, it's a healthy drop.
Yeah, I try to scale that off and put it where it's supposed to be, and it looks like you'd be at about nine seventy-six at the very north west corner.
Yep.
If you moved it thirty feet further, and you'd have to take out a hunk of trees to get it in there, something like that. I'd be willing to look at maybe some reduction in the variance.
Mr. Chair. Um, I, I went out and looked too, and I thought that was a tricky maneuver to try to get a building, and I think your property is really kind of challenging.
Yep.
And in, in reading the report, I was really concerned that the Water Resources Engineer had concerns about the neighbor and whether if you put a building in, whether it was going to pour water down on the neighbors, and then you're talking about all this water. So I think if you could reduce it and we could find a way to move it and then have it engineered again, just to make sure that we didn't make any mistakes here, because I don't think it'll work the way it's proposed here at all. They already have water issues and the engineer said right in the thing that he has concerns about a driveway approaching into the drains, drainage easement, and a concern about the construction and water runoff approaching on the neighbors. So you add that on top of a bunch of water problems, I'm sure you'd want to have your neighbors fear this avenue.
Yeah, I am the lowest property. I am the lowest property, and all the water comes in by, uh, south of the house, that's where all the water comes in, and then goes between my septic site and the, uh, and the swing setter, the trampoline you can see on that map, it beers that way. And so, yeah, I am the lowest property, it all flows to my, my house. So, so, yeah, I mean, yeah, yeah, it is, it is what it is, you know? And so that's why I want to tech the shed back there, the whole driveway, yeah, I'm all about getting an engineer out there and trying to figure out, but I don't want water, and I don't think the water's going to the neighbors, I just don't want it in my house. You know, that's, that's, I'd be doing that for my sake, because I am the lowest.
Mr. Chair, civil, civil or survey involved are controlled.
Yeah, yeah.
Where they, they can do that.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. Shane, what were, you, you said you'd be willing to shrink it, uh, and, but still to accommodate some of your items that are wherever.
Yeah.
What would be your minimum? Have you?
Uh, probably right around fifteen feet.
Uh, size of the building?
Oh, I don't.
No, not the, excuse me.
Yeah, yeah, the size of the building would probably, uh, like thirty-six wide, thirty, I don't know, thirty, yeah, I'd still run with two ground chores, and I'd probably make it fifty, I don't know, fifty. If I took it off the side, I'd probably add it to the back type of thing, I'd probably make the building thirty-six by fifty-four, you know, give or take. I'd still be close to that two thousand square feet, but it wouldn't be over, obviously.
When were you going to interject, Ray?
Oh, sorry, um, I was just saying it'd be a fifteen foot variance, and you, and maybe you make, you make his building a little smaller by the fifteen foot variance from the, some property line.
Yeah, there was a slip.
Seems reasonable.
Yeah.
No, I just wondered, you know, we're not talking about twenty by twenty, you know?
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to get this, yeah, my boat and my, uh, utility trailer in there.
Anything else?
Because, uh, I'm.
Meeting, if anyone else likes to address this issue, please step forward and, uh, address your interest or concern. Do you need to close the public hearing, or do you want to discuss it, um, after the close of public hearing?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second, motion by Commissioner Johnson, second by Commissioner Vonhoff, all those in favor of closing the public hearing.
Aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. So, uh, entertain discussion or a motion.
Mr. Chair, based on eight hardship criteria for granting the variance, I recommend approval of the request, fifteen foot variance to reduce the retard side, uh, from thirty to fifteen feet.
I'll second that request.
Okay.
Motion by, um, Commissioner Huber, uh, second, Commissioner Vonhoff. Any, uh, further discussion?
I would recommend, uh, addition of a, uh, just an additional, uh, condition of that, that there be some type of engineering waterfall study of what happens when the building's in there, and I don't know how to phrase that exactly.
For the hydraulics, yeah.
Yes.
Is that just for the driveway? Oh, sorry.
Yes, where, when the building goes in, that it doesn't change the waterfall.
The drainage around the building, how it goes into the ravine, civil engineer.
Right, just, that would be my recommendation.
That would be, uh, is that, that's a friendly amendment?
Friendly amendment to the chair, or to the motion maker.
Other comments? Hearing none, uh, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose, motion carries, seven.
Thank you.
Last, next item on the agenda is, uh, election of officers. It would be the Board of Adjustment Chair, the Vice Chair, and Secretary of the Board. Should we, um, should we go one at a time, or should, can I, can we do them all three at once?
Do all three at once.
Right.
Wait and then ask for it.
Okay, I'm gonna, okay, I'm gonna open the nominations for, um, uh, for Chair.
May I nominate Gary Hartman? Now can I also nominate Vice Chair? I don't know who that is.
Vice Chair nomination.
Is it?
Uh, Ray Huber.
And Ray Huber for Vice Chair and Secretary?
I think so, yes.
Lee Watson, Secretary.
Yeah, I've got, um, nominations, Gary Hartman for, uh, Chair, Ray Huber, Vice Chair, and Lee Watson, Secretary of the Board. Um, are there any other nominations for any of these three positions? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? I'll entertain a motion to, uh, close the nominations.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Vonhoff, second by Commissioner Huber to close the nominations. And we'll vote for all three at the same time. All, all those in favor of, uh, these three positions that were nominated, say aye.
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 Propose, motion carries, seven, zero. And, um, that concludes the Board of Adjustment meetings. Entertain a motion to close the Board of Adjustment meeting.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner.
Ray Huber?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robbie, all those in favor of, uh, closing the Board of Adjustment, say aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.
I call to order the Scott County Planning Advisory Commission for April twelfth, two thousand twenty-one. And, uh, we will start, uh, with our roll call and introductions. I'll start with the Scott County Planning Advisory Commissioners. Commissioner Hentges.
Yeah.
Commissioner Hartman.
Here.
Commissioner Huber.
Here.
Commissioner Robbie.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Watson.
Here.
Commissioner Vonhoff, here. Uh, also in the, uh, chambers this evening, we have Brad Davis, our planning manager, Marty Schmitz, our zoning administrator, Greg Wagner, our senior planner, Nathan Hall, our associate planner is here. Uh, Barb Simonson, deputy clerk to the board, is here with us as well, and, um, we know that, uh, to Zoom, Tom Wolfe, our county commissioner, is also present this evening. I will move on now to the approval of the March eighth Planning Advisory Commission meeting minutes. All of the commissioners have been sent copies of the Planning Advisory Commission minutes and have been up to review them. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to the minutes as printed? Okay, hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the March eighth, twenty twenty-one Planning Advisory Commission meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I have a motion by Commissioner Robbie, I have a second by Commissioner Hentges.
I will abstain.
And I have one abstention, Commissioner Johnson is abstaining. Um, I will call the vote on this. Commissioner Hentges?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner Huber?
Yes.
Commissioner Robbie?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson is abstaining. Uh, Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Vonhoff?
Yes.
These are approved. Next item is consent agenda. All items can, listed on the consent agenda are considered by the Planning Commission to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a Planning Commission board member or a member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda to be considered separately. The first item is a public hearing, it's the Saint Patrick Athletic Association, uh, for, uh, a request for conditional use, it's number twenty twenty-one dash zero eighteen. To operate outdoor commercial recreational. Recreational use baseball field, section seventeen, Cedar Lake Township, and, uh, the current zoning is T R. Um, would anyone like to have this removed from the consent agenda? Okay, that item will remain on the consent agenda. The second item, uh, is the Stadola Riding Arena, number twenty twenty-one dash zero nineteen. It's a request for conditional use permits to construct a private indoor riding arena. Location is section two, Cedar Lake Township, the current zoning is rural residential one. Would anyone like that to be removed from the consent agenda? Okay? The, uh, third item is the Proud Mobile Home application, it's twenty twenty-one dash zero two-two. It's a request for an interim use permit for Kevin Proud to place a mobile home for an referred family member. Location is section twenty-four, Newmarket Township, and the current zoning is U E R. Would anyone like that to remove from the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I have some questions on that one.
Okay, so you'd like to have that removed?
Yes.
Okay, um, so that item will be considered separately, so, um, we will approve, when we approve the consent agenda, the other two items, the Saint Patrick Athletic. the Saint Patrick Athletic Association item and the Stadola Riding Arena. I would, uh, those, that's item three-one and three-two. I would like a motion from, uh, Planning Commission Member to, uh, request.
Mr. Chairman, I will be approve the consent agenda as listed.
I have.
One, three point two.
Thank you very much. I have a motion by Commissioner Watson, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Hartman. Uh, does there be any discussion on these items? Okay. At this time, I will call the roll on this. Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner Huber?
Yes.
Commissioner Robbie?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Von Hoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Hensches? I have a gavel this evening, so I have to use my fist. That is the official approval this evening. So those two items, if you came for those two items, they have been approved. And the next item we will do is we will consider now separately, uh, the request for interim use. Thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you for coming.
Give you a moment to leave. Thank you very much.
Play ball. Play ball.
Who will be doing the staff report?
Earl. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, the, uh, subject property is located in section twenty-four of New Market Township. Uh, it is a ten-acre property, it's a largely wooded property. And the applicant is proposing to, uh, place the mobile home in the, uh, quite just south of the primary residence. The intent of the mobile home would be to, uh, provide accommodation for Mr. Proud, the applicant's mother, Tracy Proud. And a medical doctor has stated, uh, that, uh, Tracy Proud is, uh, in need of assistance, in need of help. Uh, they have tested that. Uh, we do have plans for the mobile home. Um, it is, uh, approximately two hundred square feet. And, uh, the mobile home does need to meet different requirements. It does need to be removed, uh, after the, uh, uh, after the infirm family member is no longer occupying it, it needs to be removed within sixty days. Uh, Scott County Environmental Services has reviewed the request, and they do require that, uh, the subject system be placed to accommodate, um, a separate, uh, separate dwelling, uh, because the whole system is not large enough, uh, to accommodate it. Uh, this one is, uh, evaluated by the, uh, Town Board as well. And they are recommending approval, um, with the condition that it meets all, uh, county requirements. You'll also find in your staff report that the, uh, several, uh, a number of items will need to be met at the time of the building permit. Uh, we have received, um, uh, two different phone calls regarding this item. Uh, I'm sorry, I should say three phone calls regarding this item, uh, two or more inquiries, uh, they, uh, was a neighbor, a neighbor that is immediately to the south of this property. And they have provided an email, uh, that, uh, was included on the, on the desk, uh, on the earlier today. Um, and they have expressed concerns for allowing an interim use permit, uh, at that location. Excited, uh, concerns, uh, other concerns about the neighborhood is spelled in their letter.
Can't hear you, Nathan.
Oh, I'm.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, uh, Commissioner Hensches.
Just say that again about the email, please.
Uh, yes, we did receive, I, I did receive a phone call earlier today, uh, from Mr. Brown's wife. And he expressed concerns with the use, um, and concerns with, uh, other uses that are in the neighborhood. And he, uh, stated that the, uh, allowing the trailer to be brought onto the property would, uh, depreciate, uh, his property. And, um, has an issue with, uh, quite other concerns with, uh, with the neighborhood as well. Uh, he said that it's not in favor of allowing permit to be implemented. Now, based on the information submitted, uh, by the applicants, and subject to the conditions of approval, that has, uh, our staff is recommending approval of, uh, this request, uh, based on the six criteria for granting an interim use permit. And that does include, uh, the requirement that, uh, the conditions of approval is that the mobile home be removed, uh, when it is no longer being occupied by. I conclude my presentation, uh, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair.
Nate, um, I'm reading our, the conditions here. Number four, the applicants shall pay an annual inspection fee for the I U P if and when the county adopts an inspection fee ordinance.
Um, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Hartman, uh, that is a standard condition, uh, that we have in other C U Ps and, and I U Ps. And we do not have an annual inspection fee, uh, but should such time in the future, uh, if be implemented, uh, this, uh, stating that they will be required, uh, so be able to be applied to mature actively. And one of the more senior members of staff may be able to do better, uh, bestest rate of that.
Okay, uh, so if, if there's, at this time, there's no inspection fee, but then at this time, is there an inspection once a year?
Mr. Hartman, the applicant, uh, does need to, uh, file with the planning office annually, uh, with a statement of, uh, their compliance with the conditions of interim use permit. Uh, they do need to provide, uh, verification, um, that the person living in the mobile home is the infirmed family member.
Okay, which brings up my final point then. Um, so basically, in our county, these, um, uh, extra dwellings, every year they, they fill out a, are supposed to fill out a report that, uh, to verify that someone's, a family member is living there. So, do they act, does everybody actually do that? I mean, is, is that reality, or is it just a rule that is there?
Uh, Mr. Hartman, um, uh, we do, uh, the full compliance, uh, inspector does, uh, receive a number of these different, uh, letters on an annual basis, and they can be quite simple, uh, simply stating that they are in compliance, that, yes, um, this proud is still living in the dwelling, uh, is still in need of assistance. Uh, it could be a very simple letter. You receive a number of those every year. Um, do we receive it from every, uh, every applicant every year? Um, uh, there may be some that don't, but, um, we do keep record of, of all those, and we do, uh, sometimes follow up on that.
Thank you.
Chairman. I'm understanding this is for one person, so I have a couple of issues. Is the necessity for two bathrooms, two bedrooms? And then someone had sent an email says, I don't know if this is true, but I underlined it. There are two extra rooms in the basement that do not have windows. So I don't know, it doesn't look like a basement, but is there a basement? Those are my issues, is the necessity for.
If the applicant wants to come up and address that, he's raising his hand, wants to come up and just sign in at the format there. And if you could start your statement, uh, with your name and speak loudly, because we're trying to, uh, record this and our, our microphones are spread out here a little bit.
Mr. Chairman, uh, my name is Kevin Proud, P R O D L I, and I'm the applicant. My primary residence does have, essentially, I tried to lose on the, uh, basement that do not have degressors. The property being considered for this I U P does not allow.
Then if you could tell me why, if it's for one person, there's two bathrooms and two bedrooms?
So, the purpose for that would be for my daughter, who would be my, uh, mother's granddaughter, to be able to visit some night?
And that's the necessity for two bathrooms also? I'm just wondering if you could get a little smaller building?
I think a smaller building would be something that would be possible, but not by.
Mr. Hartman.
Yeah, Mr., um, question for staff, I guess. What, um, when you figure out, uh, there's a minimum number of, of square footage that's allowed, uh, what was it always, like, eight or hun, eight hundred square feet or a thousand or something?
Uh, Mr. Hartman, uh, for an accessory dwelling unit, which is a different, um, uh, a different use than interim, than a mobile home for an infirm family member, uh, for an accessory dwelling unit, the maximum is eight hundred household square feet, uh, so not including closets, bathrooms, et cetera.
Yeah.
This, uh, dwelling would, um, perhaps applicant correct me if I'm wrong, but it'd be about twelve hundred square feet.
Yeah.
Although it would be probably quite close to that eight hundred square feet, uh, if we exclude the closets and bathrooms and all this.
Okay.
So I think it's important to point out that the accessory dwelling unit is a separate section of the ordinance from what he is applying for a mobile home permit under, it's for an infirm parent specifically.
Okay. And Commissioner Hensches?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Marty, does, uh, same-size requirements go with the mobile home requirements as for the accessory building?
Commissioner Hensches, within, um, the section of the ordinance where we allow the mobile home for the infirm parent, we don't have a maximum size, um, requirement in the ordinance. So it, it just says a mobile home would be permitted for an infirm family member.
Do, do we have a lot of these right now?
No, it's pretty rare.
Well, you know, this is, you know, I support the Aging in Place initiative when we can, because I think it's important, and particularly important out in the, in the country. And I heard concerns raised that I think are very legitimate about whether or not we check them and that. I'd hate to see us not pass this, because we aren't managing how we check something. If it's the right thing to do and, and we want to support these initiatives, I think we have to. And then we have to turn around with staff and figure out how we make sure that the right person is in these dwellings, but not decide not to do it, because we, we don't think we can control it. So I, that's just my two cents, I, as, really support this type of thing.
Mr. Chairman, a question for the applicant, uh, this looks like a manufactured home. Is that what it is?
Yes.
So it's not a trailer or motor mobile home or anything like that, so, that you're gonna put it on a foundation, right?
Clarification, it will be put on cross-detected years. As far as the legal definitions between, uh, mobile home and manufactured home, I would have to defer my contractor, who is here as well as you. I'm unfortunately not a contractor.
Have your head.
Sir, can you sign in and then also state your name when you start speaking? And make sure that you project enough so that our microphones can pick you up. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Apologies. Construction is not my fault, so I will.
So, so manufactured home and a mobile home are home on sale from Excelsior Homes in Hudson, okay? So manufactured mo, mobile home, essentially, they're the same thing. The terminology would be proper by, say, manufactured house, built to HUD code, which is the, uh, prescriptive code federally mandated. And so, you know, basically, that's, that's what it is. Same, same thing, different terms.
Sure, you've got a question, Robbie. Are there, is this a split, two pieces come together?
It is, it's.
And are there axles underneath the?
Yeah, there's running.
Running system has a separate axle.
Correct.
And the axles will remain on, on the?
The axle, in this situation, they will remain on there, so it'll be fully mobile. And when it's time, it will have to be, you know, the hitches, the running gear. Everything basically split apart, wrapped up, and better putting the wheels on and, and well. Yeah. Yeah, okay. And it has to be, so everything, the foundation, um, as far as like the installation, it's gotta be on a frost-free foundations. We do have to put frostbeers under it, all the anchoring system, and that's all, that's all, um, dictated by the, well, the state, but the county will enforce the code. And septic system, I do have a design. I forgot to bring the design with me, but that's fully executed for a two-bed, two-bedroom home. And in regards to like the size, in the state of Minnesota, there's, a two-bedroom system essentially is the smallest, um, individual septic system that you can design, so, um, and I think that we would agree that, I mean, there's no other person that's gonna be living in the house. And then in regards to like the size, the difference between a house like this, essentially, there isn't really one bedrooms that they're even flowing through the factories right, right now. Um, it's just not productive to do so in, you know.
So it's gonna be my next question, what would it take, if you can, as Chairman Johnson said, to reduce this to like a one bathroom or a one bedroom, but in your, in your shop?
Yeah.
They come pre-cut, basically, they run through the line, right?
Well, so the factories, especially now with the large demand, is they try to keep everything simplified. Same thing, you know, going through the factory the same way. I mean, in, in this situation, I could take a closet out, and we could take the door off, and we could call it a den if we wanted to. Um, but costs, cost-wise, not that that should be an issue, but it costs more to do something like that. And I, and I think just to be clear, like, under all the, the rules and the regulations of, of the U I, or I U P, this basically fits right into that, and there's no conditions as far as size or anything. So I think I would hate to see, you know, if it's defined by, you know, those, those stipulations also, so.
Other questions?
I have a question for the applicant. You are aware that, if this, if we approve this I U P, that it says right in there, it's terminated, uh, upon the mobile home not being occupied by an infirm family member, you understand that? And I just wanted that in the record, um, because this, one of your neighbors was concerned that it would end up being there when there was no longer a need for it. And, and the way that these I U Ps are designed is to accommodate that for families to have this capability to do this. And, and so it's very important that, right at the beginning, we all understand that this runs until it's not needed anymore. And then it's your responsibility to, you understand that?
My intention basically is to buy, uh, my mother's.
Thank you very much. Other questions?
I'll entertain a motion this time. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hartman, do I have a second? A second by Commissioner Robbie, all in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Now I'll entertain a motion. Uh, item before us. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Given the criteria for approval listed in the staff report, I recommend approval of interim use permit for Kevin Proud to place a mobile home for an infirm family member, recognizing township as, uh, as well.
I have a motion by Commissioner Watson, do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Hensches, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Uh, Commissioner Huber?
Yes.
Commissioner Robbie?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wat.
Did we note that New Market Township recommended it?
Yes.
I didn't know that.
Uh, Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Von Hoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Hensches? Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Motion passes. Very much so. Our, uh, next item is a public hearing. And, uh, our staff is getting ready to get set up here. Leave, uh, Greg, uh, Watson.
Leave, uh, Greg, uh, what's?
You know.
Family. Wow, a lot of people.
But it's like twelve grand, I'm glad somebody remembered.
They'll put them, they'll put them on frost years down five feet.
We're just taking a moment here to get organized and ready for a presentation, so. Thank you all for coming this evening. Yeah, I just could see people. Could just see all people. And the public hearing that we're starting here is the Brian Rock Products. It's, uh, number twenty twenty-one dash zero one four, twenty twenty-one dash zero one five. It's a request to amend conditional use permit for mining to revise the reclamation plan to accommodate future use of the property. Second portion, request for an interim use permit to expand an existing limestone quarry to sixty acres to the south. Location is, uh, sections twenty-one and twenty-eight. Louisville Township, current zoning is I two, industrial two. And, uh, Marty, you can be making.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll get these picked up anyway, and then I'm gonna turn it over to the applicant to actually present the request.
Hey, Paul.
On the screen, you can see the site location map for the Brian Rock Products, uh, property, two hundred and forty acres approximately. Uh, been mining out here since the nineteen fifties. Uh, they got, uh, conditional use permit back in nineteen, 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 three. The current condition, they're operating under. Um, on the east side of the property here is the highway one sixty-nine. I think we're all pretty familiar with it. We're a couple miles south of Shockers. One sixty-nine on the east side of the property, this is twenty-one. One sixty-nine comes into one sixty-nine where the new overpass was constructed. Here, uh, within the last couple of years. West side of the property is the Uni-Pacific Railroad. And on the, to the west of the Uni-Pacific Railroad is actually Melkerson's property. And as the chairman said, uh, the site is zone two, or I two, which is our heaviest industrial zone. Here's an aerial photo of the property. You can see the existing, uh, mine on the northern port, northern roughly three quarters of the site. Uh, that's where the conditional use permit is located. This is where they're requesting an amendment to the existing conditional use permit to, uh, get the reclamation, uh, plan in shape for, uh, final reclamation of sites for potential future uses. Uh, the southern sixty acres is located here, largely taken property at this point in time. Um, this is the area that they're applying for the interim use permit to expand into. So, um, gives you, gives you the idea. Um, the planning report was essentially a combined planning report for the interim use permit and the conditional use permit amendment, just because this site really acts as one project, uh, even though it's two applications. Uh, to give you a little bit better idea, this is the Renaissance property as located right here. Melkerson's quarry operations are located, you know, around it also. Brian Rock does the, the mining on Melkerson's property as well. Uh, with that, what I'd like to do is turn the presentation over to the applicant to get into the details of this request, uh, bring us up to speed on where the current operations are.
Mr. Chairman, I just would like to say that I will not be participating in this as a contributor.
All right. Just a note for that. Also, um, when you come up, please project your voice. We're trying to record. We have recorders there and there and one here. So we'll all try to be quiet when someone's talking, but when you're talking, um, please project as, as well as you can.
So, do you mind if I stand and?
Yeah, which one of you?
And can you start your presentation by saying who you are?
Yeah. So, BRP. So, good evening. My name is Kirsten Polly. I'm with Sunday Engineering, um, and working with Brian Rock Products on the, the two applications that you'll be considering tonight. Um, Matt Bryan is here and Eric Bryan is also here. Um, as Marty said, I'll go through a, an overview of the, the mining site, what's being requested, and then, um, able to answer any questions that you might have. So, how do you want me to cue you?
Yeah, just say next slider.
Next, click. So, um, basically it's, it's a single application package, but, uh, Brian Rock is asking for two separate actions. One is to amend the existing conditional use permit, and the other is to establish a new IUP for the southern portion. And that's simply because the existing mine is nearing completion. Um, and by keeping the two operations separate, there's just more flexibility for potentially finding an end use for the north, northern parcels before we're at, that they're actually done mining in the southern parcels. And just making a few amendments to the, um, the existing mining operation. So go ahead and click. So, uh, it's two hundred and forty-one acres total, uh, located west of one sixty-nine and north of a hundred and forty-seventh street. And Marty's already gone over kind of the location. Go ahead and click. Um, going by two, heavy industrial. Um, and then the environmental review, whenever you have a mining operation that's greater than forty acres in size, it requires a mandatory environmental review. And I think most of you remember the environmental impact statement that was done for Merriam-Junction Sands over the past several years. Um, and that project actually included all of this property and it, it studied the, um, silica sand mining, but it also studied the limestone mining, which would have to take place in order for the sandstone mining to take place, as well as some sand and gravel mining on the Melkerson Sales property. So all of the environmental review that, um, that was done for Merriam-Junction Sands, um, included this project. So, um, so environmental review was actually completed then last year in, um, in July. And, um, it's just, what's being asked is just the limestone portion of the mining. There is no sandstone or silica sand mining associated with this request. So that's clear. Um, go ahead. So, the existing quarry is, go ahead and, you can go ahead and, yeah. Um, so it's about a hundred and eighty-one acres in the northern portion of the site. Marty said it's been active since the nineteen fifties. Um, and the current IUP was issued in nineteen ninety-three. Um, the updated reclamation plan conforms to the recently updated mining ordinance that the county has. It ties into the proposed southern expansion grade. And then it also, um, it, it's really operations as, as usual. It's just basically finalizing, um, reclamation grades. And, um, the only change in operations is the request to add recycling activities. Um, the recycling is concrete and asphalt. It's a common for almost all mining in this, all mining operations these days includes concrete and asphalt recycling. Um, and there's more and more products that require, uh, the specifications require recycle. And so by allowing this activity in the quarry, it, it just gives Brian Rock the opportunity to provide the recycle, um, base materials as well. So really, from an operations standpoint, that's the only change that's being requested. Um, the south quarry is sixty acres, is, um, is bicycled by a hundred and forty-fifth street. And with the new frontage road alignment and overpass system, the access for the existing Brian Rock quarry has been relocated, um, off of Red Rock Road just this past year, in twenty, in twenty-twenty. Um, the scale house was relocated and the access road, uh, to the existing quarry now extends through this proposed south quarry. So as part of this, uh, project, it's the, um, vacation of a hundred and forty-fifth will be requested from the township. Uh, we met with the township last week, um, and that process will be started, which involves a public hearing. And, um, then the township can decide exactly how they want to terminate the Red Rock Drive in this vicinity that the right-of-way goes. There's a, a small piece of property that's largely wetland, but it's owned by Mid-America Festivals. And, uh, we need to make sure that that still maintains access there. But the idea is to vacate a hundred and forty-fifth, um, remove the, the asphalt so that, um, so that it, it discourages people from going in and, and dumping. There's been some issues, I think, in that area. So we're gonna work through that process. And when we were with the township, one of their recommendations is to, uh, make sure that that gets vacated before mining, um, in phase three, which would include removing a hundred and forty-fifth. But that process, um, Matt has just started now, so we'll try to take care of that sooner rather than later. Um, go ahead. So the quarry operations, as I said, there's no change really in what's being requested. Um, the existing operations, with, with the exception of adding that recycling, but it consists of stripping topsoil and overburden, um, establishment of perimeter berm so that that material is retained on site and can later be used in reclamation. Um, the rock needs to be blasted and then the, the limestone's removed and it's brought to the processing plants where there's crushing and screening and aggregate washing that occur. Those products are sized and put into various stockpiles. And then there's hauling and loadout. And then reclamation, backfilling, spilling, and, and final edge treatment. Um, it's, it's estimated that there's about eight to ten years of life remaining in the, the total existing quarry and the proposed south quarry. Um, that is, based on market demand, it's hard to predict what the economy's gonna do. Um, it, it could be less than that, um, but that's kind of what the projection is at this point. So, um, Polly, um, is, is going to be, um, again, through that new access location that's located to the south, rather than the old entrance was right off of one sixty-nine. And that's been reduced to a right-in, right-out now, um, with the frontage road improvements that have been made. So predominantly, all the hauling is, um, all the trucks leave to the south, to a hundred and forty-fifth. And they, um, head south on Red Rock Drive. If they are going north on one sixty-nine, they, they go over the crossover, head south, and then... Oh, could you? I'm sorry.
And say out of that checkbook.
Um, sorry about that. Um, and when we were at the township meeting, um, we, um, we learned that some of the trucks, rather than, than coming down Red Rock Drive, coming across one forty-fifth, they're, they're heading north on one sixty-nine. They can just come down to the south and then they get on one sixty-nine and head north. That's the shortest route. That's the, the intention. But apparently, some of them, when they come across and they wanna go north, they instinctively make a left-hand turn to go north. And then they head down the entire length of the frontage road to get on one sixty-nine. And so there's, um, um, there's a bit of educating the drivers as to what the, kind of the new and, and most efficient route is. And so, and it was a concern of some of the neighbors because they're, they're driving by on this frontage road with these trucks. So, um, one of the things that, that, um, Brian Rock is gonna be doing is gonna be handing out to, as, as they cross the scale, a flyer that explains. And I think that there's a little bit of, um, driver education that we, that needs to occur so that, that can be, um, that, that doesn't occur as often as it is right now. And I think, um, you know, the Dusets have a residence right there and, and, um, Matt will be willing to work to try to resolve that concern that, that was brought up at the township meeting. Um, basically, you know, because it's status quo in terms of operations, there's not an increase in traffic because of this, it's, it's based on market demand. Um, in the EIS, it was determined that there's about forty-nine trips per hour, peak AM. Um, and the PM peak is about thirty-nine trips per hour. Um, the new access point will be utilized, um, and the scale and scale house has already been relocated. And, um, again, a process to kind of train, train drivers to, to understand the new access and, and how to most effectively get onto one sixty-nine. Um, there has been some, uh, the county highway department sent a letter saying that they were requesting a tracking control plan. There has been some tracking with the new access. And so tracking control plan was put together and it's been submitted to the, um, highway department for review and approval. Um, and according to the staff reports, they're, um, they want that approved before this goes to the county board. Um, essentially, you can see the new access, it's got a, um, about two hundred and forty feet of, um, pavement. And, um, if you can click, will help me remember. So paved entrance, about two hundred and forty. Go ahead and click again. Um, Matt, um, has recently installed what are called these chain track panels. And these are for exiting trucks. And what they are, is they're a series of panels that have, um, chains on them. The trucks come over them and as you move over the, the trains, it jostles, uh, um, sediment that might be stuck on the tires and it drops. And there's a, an actual space between the, the grave below and then the top of those chains. So then that sediment accumulates. They can just be picked up and moved and, and that material removed as needed to maintain them. Um, it, it's a, it's a more effective method than something like a rock construction entrance that gets clogged up over time and more frequently. So these have just been added, um, as well, and all the exiting trucks are supposed to exit over those. Um, the access road itself is new, it just put in last year. And so there's been some settlements. And part of, I think, the issue may be that some of those areas that have settled, um, need to, the, they need to be regraded to, to better establish drainage away and not have these bird bags that would collect water that would, um, increase the potential for trapping. And so Matt is working on, um, those improvements to the road as well. And then if you wanna, so that's improving drainage on the haul road and, um, daily inspections during hauling, during active operations. And then Brian Rock also has a vacuum sweeper truck that they purchased. And so they, uh, sweep as needed. And, um, all of these measures, if they, if they are still proving to be difficult to control tracking, um, the, the situation will be monitored. And, um, you could easily add, easily but expensively add additional panels of the train, of the chains. Or you could pave additional length of pavement, um, or put in maybe some clean rock pads or, or, you know, there's other measures that could be done. Um, but the, the chain tracks were recently put in and, uh, we'll just see how, how effective they are and if there's any further issues, uh, continue to work to make sure that, that, that tracking doesn't become a problem, um, long-term here and that, that these me- measures will satisfy that. Um, with mining operations, um, you know, noise and dust is, is often a concern. Um, the, the site has been in operation for a long time. Um, the, the EIS took noise level measurements and found that the site complies with the state noise standards. Uh, there's a, a, a large berm that's along one sixty-nine. Um, there is the highway that basically intersects residents from the quarry operations. The, all the operations are recessed on the floor of the quarry, which, when sound travels, then if, if it hits the active face, it can get, the sound energy gets absorbed and that decreases the, the levels that actually exceed on site. So, um, even though the mining operation will continue to the south, the majority of the processing operations will stay at their existing location. So there's not gonna be, you know, moving, crushing equipment closer to neighbors or things of that nature. Um, there may be screening and some minor processing that occurs closer, but the majority of the processing will stay where it is. Um, also Brian Rock has, over the past several years, converted many of their plants to line power, which, um, which eliminates the need for a generator and reduces the overall noise. So as they continue to invest in their operations, they're adapting measures that help to reduce noise generated at the site. Um, blasting is also a concern that, um, is, uh, on top of mind for many residents. Uh, Brian Rock has blasted at this quarry for, for fifty years. You have to blast this rock. It's the only way to get it out. Um, except if you have a service mic. But, um, your new ordinance requires that a blast monitoring plan be submitted as part of the application. Um, and the county has required these from other operations as well. Uh, Brian Rock, um, prepared one for the Dusette Quarry a few years ago. Um, and so the, the, the blasting is basically... And so the blasting is basically, you're concerned about ground vibrations that might cause structural damage to a residential structure or some kind of a structure. You're concerned about air blast, which moves through the air but can break windows. It is loud and it causes, there's limits because it can cause damage as well. And then fly rock, which would, uncontrolled rock that might land outside of the quarry itself. So those are the three kind of areas of focus on a blast monitoring plan. All the blasting is done by a contractor that is a professional in the blasting industry. There are seismographs that are used to collect all the data for each blast and these data then are reviewed to make sure that the blasting stays below the limits that the federal government has established to ensure that structures are not damaged that are located offsite. Because the energy, the whole idea of the blast is to create energy to break up the rocks and the blast designs have come a long way. There's a lot of technology on how the blasting caps are delayed to concentrate that energy on the rock itself. And as blasting proceeds, the blasting contractor reviews all these seismographs to make sure that the next blast design accounts for the conditions that are occurring as they proceed through. The blast monitoring plan includes offering homeowners within a half mile of the mining limits a pre-blast survey and this was just done to document the structural condition of a structure before the blasting occurs. And when Brian Rock, a couple of years ago, did the Dussetts Quarry, the blast surveys were offered for all the homes within a half a mile. And so those have been done for the homeowners that wanted them. And the ones that were not in that half-mile radius are shown in yellow here. And so those homeowners will be offered a pre-blast survey. Not everybody wants one, but if they're offered one, they'll, the contractor will come out and document the conditions, structural conditions. And then if there is any questions about if a blast is causing damage, you've got a baseline. So that's part of the plan as well. And then the reclamation plan basically ties the two properties together. If you can go outside and put the first bullet point and the second. So the floor of the mine is above the water table. I think some of you maybe remember some of the reclamation plans that were developed for the Marion Junction sand. When the mining was going to be including sandstone, that sandstone was below the water table and the reclamation plan included some large water bodies. With the limestone mining, there is no need to mine below the water table. The floor of the mine is very near the water table. So the reclamation plan does not propose any open water bodies. There's been soils that have been identified, go ahead. Oh, another element is there's a drainage wave that runs across the northern portion of the quarry and that will be maintained in this reclamation plan. There's drainage from one sixty-nine that comes across, there's drainage from Anchor Block, there's drainage from the Demcon landfill and the recycling campus up there. And that all passes through this northern portion, some from the Louisville landfill and there's a trestle underneath the railroad track that that water goes through. And so we've submitted to Water Resources all the hydrology that shows that that will be maintained. Right now, there's not an approved outlet at this location and so part of the reclamation plan is also to stabilize an outlet, rip rappel outlet and an emergency overflow as well just to have better control over the water that does flow because those rates are high and now with more intense rainfalls, the models show that back when in the nineteen eighties, when this was modeled, the peak rates of runoff have increased because the hundred-year event, rainfall event, is a larger event now. So I think justification of that stabilized outlet is approved, safe to do. And then the kind of the last little element of the reclamation plan, in the very southern portion of the site, you have soils that were identified as being suitable for septic systems and the plan proposes to protect those soils so that in the future, there's some potential for development here. The whole northern portion of the existing mine, there's no soils that are suitable. And part of it is because it's been mined, but part of it is because it's a great location for a quarry and bedrock is close to the surface and that doesn't make for a good septic site. So the eastern high wall will have a terraced, terraced look with, and there's a slide that shows that coming up. But the rest of it basically conforms to the setbacks of the current ordinance and three-to-one slopes. There's enough material to do some backfilling and sloping. If you go to the next slide, it kind of shows that that eastern high wall will have your setback, a ten-foot primary and safety bench, twenty feet wide, ten-foot drop, a second bench and then twenty-foot drop and then backfill at a two-to-one slope just to eliminate an excessive length of high wall. So basically, that is the proposed operation and we are happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Commissioner Hoover.
Christie, as far as the shock, so you're mining the shock speed limestone down to the Jordan sand zone, so at that interface is where the groundwater table is roughly. So there's not going to be much limestone in place? You're taking the limestone right down to the Jordan?
There's typically going to be a couple feet probably of limestone that's left, but so not necessarily exposing the sandstone, but it's right at that interface and it's not retacing the five feet that might be below the water table.
So you're taking it real close, okay? As far as recycling concrete and vituums, what is those operations like, the recycling part?
So typically what happens is, and this will require a separate permit from Scott County, what department?
Environmental.
Environmental. But what they do is they bring in chunks of concrete that have been removed from a certain project, right? And they stockpile it and chunks of asphalt, vituums and stockpile it until it reaches a certain size where they either bring in a specialty crusher or they crush it. I mean, I'm imagining you'll bring in a specialty portable crusher towards.
Maybe, we're planning on most likely having to add some or maybe lesser quality limestones that maybe don't blend as good. Find a home for those and create like a recycle limestone blend to make like the classics. So it's a better product when you combine, you know, the raw material plus the natural ingredients.
There might be some crushing, but nothing abnormal. Last question I had is on the restoration. You've got a big pit here. I guess I should drive around the site, but you've got a big hole in the ground. How are you going to, how are they going to restore that or put businesses down there? It's going to be down in a hole.
So that's a very good question, right? It's a challenge. There is going to be a limited number of potential development uses on this site. Part of the challenge is that the northern portion has no septic site. So under the current ordinance, you can't have outside storage unless you have a principal building, you can't have a principal building unless you have a septic site. So that means that it's a challenge from the get-go. But there's, you know, there's potential for expansion of the Demcon landfill, there's potential for some kind of outside storage that has a limited need for any kind of wastewater generation, maybe some recreational activity. You know, we kind of talked about a few things, but there are definitely some things that could be done and it's finding one of those uses that fit in the heavy industrial zone here.
Yeah, I can see having a warehouse or some type of industrial building down in the hole because it's a little quieter down there, pumping up to the septic system maybe and then leaving the northern part for storage or something.
I think too, even if you've had some very low water users where your storage needs and it wasn't really bad, you should be able to work with environmental to either have holding tanks for the minimal water that's created for some of those kinds of uses here too.
Yeah, I would think when you go with a building or something like that, you'd have to have more two feet of soil there, but that would be some specific, you'd import more sand or whatever to brush.
Right, exactly. So any kind of like detailed design would come depending upon what is proposed.
Any other questions this time?
Thank you very much for the presentation.
I would just wrap up by saying that we find it to comply with our rules as far as side sloping for a quarry operation. We are dealing with an existing facility that's been mined for a number of years, so it is a little bit unique what's going on against one sixty-nine, but that was approved as part of that nineteen ninety-three. We're just working with those plans that were already drawn. The township did review this meeting, this request that they're meeting last Thursday night. They did have a couple of concerns. One was the tracking of material out onto those roads and I think Kirsten went over that pretty well. But it is a very significant issue that's been occurring here over the winter months since they've moved the access to this south. And I think they're on the right track with what they've put together. There might need to be some DMPs to be put in place to totally control it, but I think we're on the right track with the plan for keeping the roads clean out there.
Will that be a formalized plan then that comes together and before it goes to?
Yeah, yeah, so I think what Kirsten has submitted, it's currently being reviewed by our highway departments. I think they're going to find it adequate and, you know, if we need to add to it, we'll go ahead and do that. It's also being reviewed by the town board, so they're looking at it because we've got some.
If there needs to be more mitigation of things that need to be done then.
Right, right. And then I was also going to say there was some comments by our natural resources engineer on the stormwater management plan. The applicant has submitted responses to her concerns, she just hasn't had a chance to take a look at those yet and we feel we can work to go with this as well. The staff is recommending approval of both the amended CUP and the IEP. The conditions are virtually identical. The IEP does have an end date, so it does have an extra condition in it. The township is here. Talk a little bit more about the rest of the case as well.
Thank you very much. Any questions right now? The township would like to come up and make a couple comments on this. Go ahead, you can speak from right there.
For wherever you want to.
Speak loud enough so we get it on recording.
John Weckman, Louisville Township. One of the things we did talk to Matt tonight was putting an application for vacating one hundred and forty-fifth in advance and getting that done mainly for safety as they get closer with the drop-off and everything. And like I say, Friday they were sweeping, they got the blacktop in, the chains are in. In the rain, it's not the best, but I don't know an answer to it either, but they had the sweeper in there and cleaned it up.
How significant an issue have you been seeing? How significant of an issue have you been seeing with that?
What a bit, you know, the county called me too, the township, that we got to do something, but they got a pickup broom now, truck network and a side broom just into it. So I think that's going to work out. And I think the other deal is they got an asphalt will be for restoration. I actually wanted to deal there, I think number fourteen. Anything else we need there? I think that we've semi been dealing with hard gonnics, our plan.
Good job. Thank you.
Did the township approve?
This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to make comment on certifications here?
I would note that we did send out hearing notices to all landowners within a half mile of this facility, which is double our normal notification distance because of the impact from the quarry operation. And obviously, there's a pretty good shot.
Exactly. Is anything on Zoom or anyone calling in on this? Have we had any, anyone come in?
In the hearing notice, we asked people if they wanted to participate on Zoom, that they call in and we give them, give them the information on how they can back then. We had no one.
Thank you, thank you very much. One more time, any, no other comments? Okay. I'm all entertaining motion to close the public hearing.
Will we close the public hearing?
Motion by Commissioner Watson, do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Hoover. On favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. One abstention, Commissioner Johnson. I'll entertain motion this time.
Mr. Chair, based on criteria for approval, conditions listed in the staff report, I recommend approval for the interim use permit and condition use permit amendment for Brian Rock Products to operate a limestone quarry, noting that this recommendation is subject to approval of conditions listed in the staff report, thus those be satisfactorily addressed prior to county board consideration of the project and noting that the township has also recommended approval.
I have a more fact, Commissioner Hoover, do I have a second?
Second motion.
Second by Commissioner Watson. I will call for a vote on this and I will do the roll call vote.
Commissioner Henshaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoover?
Yes.
Commissioner Robbie?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Danny.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Von Haan?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to point something out again and I've brought this up at several meetings in the past, a job that the Louisville Township Board does with their businesses and their community and their citizens. And I just want to point them out, just in case all the board members don't know who they are, John Weckman, raise your hand, John, and...
Bob Peaper back there.
Bob Peaper in the back and Kevin Tice and the clerk is Cheryl Dussett and her husband Toll. These people are their citizens and I wish the other townships, this county, did the same thing. And I want to thank you guys for...
Kudos to the board and thank you for your involvement. Again, Brian Rock does an excellent job when they come in and they do their presentations and we appreciate it and I know that it makes for a better outcome. So thank you very much.
Thank you for the giant words.
Our, you have a manager's report?
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll give him a second to, thank you very much, everyone. Have a good night.
They do ninety percent of it.
At least they're proactive versus some of these other towns.
Yeah.
That are points across, that's important.
Already, always well-prepared.
Actually, I thought that would be a great...
Do you know they produce a ball field, over Canada, very unique?
Really? And they just have that combination of...
In the papers, they're like, they're selling the paper, mining framers and fairly good. Some of, they just had a big newspaper article about mining and framers and...
Oh, we really need this product because it's going to run out.
Why is it they have to ask Herb Dolman?
I'll send that link out, I have that written in my...
Okay.
It was a very good article.
Okay, we're going to the planning managers report for us?
I've got a brief update. So, since the last meeting, we're coming forward, approved two of your recommendations. The final plan for Shimmel Acres, that heat lot development in Seagull Township was approved on March sixteenth, April sixth. The condition use permit amendment for applied electrical services modified the site and there's... the light panel, their uh, building, upbuilding, on their property in Spring. Um, I mentioned at the last meeting, the county board wants to do a workshop on what we'll call just noisy land uses. And so we're going to have a workshop with the board on May board. And then I propose that we have our own workshop at our main meeting. And we'll debrief what we heard from the commissioners and then also let you weigh in on some of these uses. And right now, what the commissioners would like to talk about is motocross tracks, hunting clubs, teleports and model airplane clubs. These have historically been uses that we've allowed to generate a lot of interest in their proposed. They generate a lot of code enforcement if they've been around for a while in the neighborhood and all types of noise. So those are the four uses that we're going to take a look at, talk to the board about how they're regulated, what kind of complaints have we heard, how other counties dealt with these types of land uses, what do we want to do with them. Start thinking about that because I'll bring that same conversation, I want to get your feedback as well. Um, and also we have, it's based on some of these sort of questions. So that'll probably our main, maybe have a few other items, if I recall, on the main agenda, nothing too controversial. So I think we'll stay in this room. I mentioned to Commissioner Hartman that tonight we're seeing how this room works and I've made a, a list of some things that we want to make sure we approve upon next one. But we'll try to stay in this room as much as we can, but if we know that there's an item that's going to generate a lot of attendance, you know, we're tight here. We may then uh, go out to the Spring Lake Town Hall for those meetings because we can accommodate more people. Um, but we'll just have to meet that decision month, month as we see what's coming up.
One question.
Go ahead.
Um, tonight, they, uh, there's a seven o'clock curfew in Ramsey, Anoka and Hennepin County. And I was watching six o'clock news and they added Dakota County.
Totally did.
So, and I thought, oh, what if it's Scott County? Is that the mechanism uh, to let, alert us all if that would happen?
Yeah, no, I, I was tracking that as well because um, someone drove over the, the Loomington Ferry Bridge and they said they could put up a big sign saying curfew for people coming into Scott County when I thought it was for Hennepin. So that's why I was thinking too. As of five o'clock in Scott County.
Yeah.
But do you have a mechanism should that occur?
That's got.
Y'all have a.
We would have had to. I knew you were, I knew you were here and just a man, I didn't do this. I think we have.
I brought this up before in the past, the solar garden, the, the screening along solar gardens. So um, like I don't know, did, if, did we have, uh, let me put it this way. I've seen a lot of them, other places that have a double roll where the, where it's staggered, which is way more effective than what we have like on two eighty-two. So are we going to look at that sometime or tweak that a little bit?
We can, yeah, we definitely can. I know Marty and I are, are, and we were talking to people today, they're doing a site visit with the operator on two eighty-two, to revisit the landscape. See if they can make any more improvements of that. Uh, but there, the problem we're, we're stuck with is they're.
Oh, you never, you never put it in, yeah.
We have to do more than what we've already approved. But for future, we need to really go. I hear what you're saying, we need to have higher standards.
Yeah, one more thing, no, uh, I got a, uh, on my year's, not the soil and water board, I've uh, I've seen where tree lines um, have been wiped out by oak spray from the name, the farmer spraying on his field and the overspray on the entire tree line. So if that were to happen around a solar garden, we, we need to put something in language, language there too. I think that if, even if it's ten, five, ten, fifteen years down the road, we need to make sure that that gets replaced.
Good point, yeah, we can, we can, as a group, look at the ordinance we have today, talk about what changes we want to make to the landscape screening and ultimately go through the process of that section.
The other thing I would say is the, the solar gardens on two eighty-two, those were the first solar gardens that came forward to this group, they're the largest. Um, since that project was approved, we have increased the height of our planting requirements. So at that point, we're only requiring three foot.
Yeah.
Our plantings, now we're up to six. So we're, we're requiring higher plantings, number one. And then number two, um, with that particular one, I know that it got very involved with the landscape plan and the township had a landscape architect that they helped, uh, that they worked with to put that landscape plant together. And it did more rely on clumps of plantings more so than rows like you're talking about, Gary. So that one is, is rather unique um, in, in stature for those particular reasons. I think we've made a lot of changes since then that have helped.
So if we go into a workshop setting next month on the noisy land uses, I think what I'm hearing is you'd also like discussion on landscaping, so.
Somewhere along the line because I would think it's going to come back again.
Yeah. Have we talked to landscape architects? I assume they're all involved with it, but there's certain type of shrubs or, or planting that work better in, in our environment, in our soils, which Scott County is eighty percent clay. So clay, what trees grow and have higher survivability.
We have, I, I know that that's been discussed, not just for solar gardens, but for all of our landscaping, we've had those discussions.
Yeah.
But we'll revisit that and come back and we'll be learned back.
How long does a replacement plan go in last, in case, when the things die? I mean, is it just a couple of years or?
No, it's continuous, it's for the life of the facility, they have to maintain the screening. And I know if a twenty foot tree dies, you can't replace that, you have to come back and fill it in. So the plants are built that way. We do require a five thousand dollar security for the first couple of years when you have more, more plants die, uh, but even after that goes away, there are times you still respond to maintenance.
Okay, uh, good point, Marty, I didn't know that. But like a commercial building, uh, what, what's that, a couple of years? They have to guarantee that the trees and stuff grow over?
Yeah, usually it's, it's a two year, we get a, we get a secure, we get five thousand dollar security typically, Gary, for the, for the plantings on a, on a larger project.
So um, next meeting, we'll probably do here, we'll certainly let you know if that changes. Uh, is there anything immediately you can think of to improve on next month?
Just a podium.
Yeah.
Get a gavel.
A gavel, a gavel, my hand works okay, but.
Even if they had a microphone would help.
Okay.
Yeah.
You'd have room for a lot more seating.
Oh, more the table this way.
You know, across the windows and around the sides because this whole spot is empty. If you swung it around, you'd have room for a lot more seating.
The only thing that we don't have is like.
Because already with the screening, that's, that's.
Oh, yeah. I will put on the microphone. Okay. That's all I have.
Great, I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Commissioner Henshaw, second?
All second.
Commissioner Johnson, all in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
You get a second, so we have.
Oh, that guy with the chest? Yeah. Wow.
I know your addresses are close, but.
But email mine.
Seen this.
I don't know it. Just because he would move it in search of the ravine doesn't mean that it would be in the water. I've seen. I'll get it right now. As they build a timber, you know, three timbers in that corner.
I don't even know where my.
I, I place it. I can hear a ringing in the house.
Every day she talks to me.
Who the hell is that calling?
He just texted me five minutes ago. I don't like that.
I just cross that number out, if you call it, you get the deputy chief.
Okay, perfect. Let me try have the right one, Lee. Well, okay, if I read it, you'd.
Forty-five years.
Yeah. I have a home phone, but you'll have.
No, I got a cell phone.
Okay, I do not have your cell.
It's right on top of it.
Yeah, part of the problem tonight was that we, kind of, we get a longer course.
Yeah.
Because we could do this and this.
And we could get staff further away from the corner.
Right, but that course to get.
That would be appropriate.
It's not that far. And so that's the long problem of blasting.
You know.
That's what they do, that's what they.
Number, uh, when they went down the descent piece? I think they used that surface knife for so much of it, we didn't get it.
The stuff to waste.
Mm-hmm.
They've, they've been out there probably as, almost as long to inquiry operations.
Oh, yes. Rain, rain. You do, I've had to, I've had to replace this a couple of days.
I have.
They have put all our foundations, so some of our foundations.
Hell, well.
Run it in.
So you'll get rid of.
Now we don't hear. Yes, and then, then you just.
I think they've got a lot of it costing the site too.
Move that one up, yeah.
I will do.
To prevent issues.
What's that cost?
I remember in the eighties, they would have to contact the sheriff's office every time there's blasting, she says the sheriff's office got a call.
Oh.
And I don't even think that occurred to me long.
Great. Yeah, I've heard a hearing, what did you want, what did you want?
Yes, I, I mean, I'm shocked with ninety-three, three notices sent out and nobody showed, nobody called?
Mm-hmm.
We have, I don't know, we have more, more calls on the riding arena, private riding arena we did on. But I think the history of it is going pretty long, it was.
There was somebody that commented about the interim parenting, about illegal buildings and uh, scrap yards and that is that just.
And we can go out and look.